Can you all hear me?
Yay, yes, we can loudly and clearly. Good work.
Oh, good. It worked. Okay. So, all I had said before was, let's go ahead and start the meeting.
How perfect is that?
Okay, so Donna, you can go ahead with roll call.
Okay. Trustee Joseph Savisky.
Yes.
Trustee, President Louise Douglas. Robert Burns.
Tommy Bob, President.
Trustee Guy Cody.
President.
Trustee Matthew Beck.
Here.
Trustee Gary Libby.
Here.
Trustee William Lent.
Here.
Trustee Seth Garrison.
I'm here.
Trustee James Willie.
Here.
Trustee Ken Lovinsky.
Here.
Trustee Kim Rich.
Here.
Trustee Kim Rich. All right, thank you.
Sorry.
Is that everybody?
That is everybody.
Okay, wonderful.
So, the first item will be to vote to conduct the meeting remotely. And I'm going to do a roll call for that. So, we'll start with that. Trustee Burns, oh, I'm sorry, I need a motion in a second on that, please.
Okay, I make a motion to have the meeting started remotely.
Trustee Cody, second.
Okay, and I will now do the roll call. Trustee Burns.
Yes.
Trustee Beck.
Yes.
Trustee Lovinsky.
Yes.
Trustee Lent.
Yes.
Trustee Garrison.
Yes.
President Douglas.
Here.
Trustee Cody.
Yes.
Trustee Cody.
Yes. Yes.
Trustee Libby.
Yes.
Trustee Rich.
Yes.
Trustee Savisky.
Yes.
Trustee Willie.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now I'd like to make a motion to accept the meeting minutes for the May 26 meeting, regular meeting.
Second.
Trustee Burns.
Are there any changes to the minutes that people want? Okay, then we'll move ahead to the roll call. Trustee Burns.
Yes.
Trustee Beck.
Yes.
Trustee Lovinsky.
Yes.
Trustee Lent.
Yes.
Trustee Garrison.
Yes.
President Douglas.
Yes.
Trustee Cody.
Yes.
Trustee Libby.
Yes.
Trustee Rich.
Yes.
Trustee Savisky.
Yes.
Trustee Willie.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is to invite the public for a public comment. And I see no one from the public is here.
Did you want to approve the minutes of the workshop as well?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. So, I guess that's what I thought we just did.
You did just, you called out just the regular meeting, so maybe you want to do it as a separate item.
I see. So...
Trustee. Trustee Lent. Make a motion that we accept the workshop meetings for June 8, 2020.
Trustee Willie, second.
Do a roll call. Trustee Burns.
Yes.
Trustee Beck.
Yes.
Trustee Lovinsky.
Yes.
Trustee Lent.
Yes.
Trustee Garrison.
Yes.
President Douglas.
Yes.
Trustee Cody.
Yes. Yes.
Trustee Libby.
Yes.
Trustee Rich.
Yes.
Trustee Savisky.
Yes.
Trustee Willie.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so now I guess we can state that there's no one here from the public for public comment. So, we can move on to our reports. And we have Operations Committee for Trustee Beck.
Thank you, Madam President. The Operations Committee met on Monday, June 8, beginning at 5:30, 7:00 PM remotely. Present were myself, Trustee Cody and Trustee Rich, as well as Scott Furman, Paul Rodriguez, and Jim Wallace from staff. Our first item considered was the annual election of the committee chair. I'm pleased to report that I was elected committee chair. And I also trustee Savisky, the previous chair of the committee. Work committee developing this in that role.
Okay.
Extend wastewater treatment facility, primary gallery, electrical assessment. Staff provided a recommendation for award and engineering services contract for the extended wastewater treatment facilities. Primary gallery, electrical assessment. The committee recommended that the and the action. Also on our wastewater treatment facility project, we've all been talking about this for quite a while. Staff provided a recommendation for a comprehensive method of development for this project. This approach will allow for regular check-in to account its critical project milestones. The committee recommended that the item be forwarded to the full board by a vote. No other items were discussed at the operation of committee meeting, the meeting adjourned at 6:20 PM. Happy to answer any questions that I can.
Thank you, Trustee Beck. Okay, next up, we have Planning Committee, Trustee Savisky.
Thank you, Madam President. The Planning Committee met remote 8, 5:30 PM. Present were myself, Trustee Libby, Trustee Willie, and our President, Louise Douglas. Attending from staff Paul Hunt and Donna Katsifakis. Item of business was to elect a chair of the committee. And I'm pleased to report after a very hard fought campaign, I emerged victorious. I had some tough competition from, from Trustee Libby, but he ultimately supported my, my chairmanship, so. That was the first item of business. Next, we moved on to a discussion of soliciting proposals to lease a portion of the Rocky Hill property in Westbrook for a solar farm development. Staff discussed soliciting proposals to lease a portion of the district's property at Rocky Hill for a solar farm development and provided an update to the city of Westbrook's potential involvement in the project. Staff reported that Trustee Cody had reached out to City Saff and the mayor of Westbrook, and the mayor responded that they are interested in exploring a partnership with the district and that they have a solar RFP that they're planning to put out for city facilities. Staff and Trustee Cody will follow up with the city, so. Nothing coming up on the agenda about this, but just my way of an update on that. And similarly, a couple of other updates were discussed at at our meeting. First was a potential cellular communication lease for the Cumberland tank. Verizon was notified by the district's consultant that a public meeting will be required prior to any commitment from the district to lease space on the tank for their equipment. Next, Paul Hunt from the district staff, I gave us a, an update about the Regional Conservation Partnership Program or the RCPP grant for land conservation. Mr. Hunt reported that the RCPP grant was filed and that this of the grant awards will be sometime in August. Staff had a brief discussion with the committee on whether or not shoreland zone property in the watershed should be considered as conserved property. Staff noted that they were preparing to discuss this in the August workshop of the board, so more coming on that front in August. And from what it sounds like from Mr. Hunt, a lot of work went into that grant proposal from a lot of people at, at the district, so well done on that. Hope for a positive result. So, that was all we had to discuss. Meeting adjourned at 6:15 PM. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Okay, if I've got these all set, we'll move on to the Admin and Finance Report. Trustee Garrison.
Thank you. The Admin and Finance Committee met on June 8. We had myself as well as Trustee Lovinsky and Trustee Burns there as well too, as long, as well as many members of the staff. It was a very full meeting with a lot of topics on the agenda. Starting with Electoral Committee Chair, I was voted as committee chair. I think primarily because people like to hear me read a lot during the meetings. The second item we talked about was the 2019 wastewater surplus balance. Mr. Kane presented a proposed motion about transferring 2019 annual net income of Gorham, Portland, Westbrook to the renewal and replacement fund. The committee unanimously recommended to table the item. We wanted to get some feedback from each of the municipalities on whether they prefer the district to retain the funds for capital projects or refund the amount to them. The next item we discussed was the Cuyinta Lucidity Project Update. The general manager reported that Cuyinta Lucidity Projects would not be ready to go live. We talked about that at our last workshop. As we discussed, the delay was primarily due to complications with the pandemic and remote working and training of staff. As we all know, the new schedule is going to be early February 2021. And there'll be some follow-up with those as well too. We postponed an action talking about the employee satisfaction survey, which we'll cover that next month. The other, under other business, we talked about utility bill collections. And we went through an update of collection activities to date. It was noted that residential accounts are up $250,000 from $200,000 and non-residential accounts are up to $80,000 from $40,000. We had authorized a waiver, as you recall, based on the governor's emergency order on shut-offs. And the PUC had mandated no service disconnection, so studying those impacts was very important. And we'll keep on looking at those and seeing how those impact us over the summer months. We discussed the defined benefit pension plan and the funding policy. Mr. Kane noted that the actuary recently revised the yearly May 1 valuation report. And this is fairly significant because the report included an increase in the recommended 2021 contribution of $1.7 million. Dollars, a $600,000 increase over 2020. And that item's going to be coming up later in the discussion of the meeting tonight. As the committee recommended that we pass on the recommendations for the change in investment to the full board. So, with that, my report's done.
Thank you, Trustee Garrison. And now we'll move on to the General Manager's Report.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted you to know that we are aggressively continuing with our essential services while protecting the health and safety of our employees. And we've been really, really conservative in how we've approached that, and I think that it's really, it's really paying off. We have four standard operating procedures that we've developed, one for working outdoors, one for working indoors, one for entering homes and businesses, and one for non-PWD personnel who are on our property. And we've trained all of our employees on those and believe everybody's, everybody's following them as they should be. Those people who have been working effectively and productively remotely will, are continuing to do so. And I've told them to expect to be doing that through the summer till, either till the second wave passes or the experts conclude we are not going to get one. So, that will keep them all separated and out of harms way at Douglas Street. The field activities have all resumed with the exception of disconnection, as Trustee Garrison just mentioned. There have been many adjustments to make that work staggered start times for the crews, the physical separation of assignments for people both at Douglas Street and at the, at the treatment plants, including the East End and Westbrook. People reporting directly to their job site from home, so they don't have to come in at all, one person per truck when that is feasible. So, we're trying to, and, and a big, big emphasis on face coverings with people. And of course, there's more and more information coming out now about just how important and effective that has been in saving a lot of cases. So, the more that we learn, the more we try to sort of regroup and keep all these things organized. Right now, we're focusing on ensuring that our facilities are safe for those people who are coming in on a daily basis to work there. So, we're using the, the governor's business reopening checklists for offices and for construction sites. Donna Libby, our safety professional, came in one morning and basically watched how people came into Douglas Street, looked at where they came in, looked at what they touched, figured out how those surfaces were being cleaned, determined what occupancy rooms should have, restrooms, the locker rooms, the break rooms, worked with the facilities manager to put up some very compelling and visually bright signs so that people would remember what they're supposed to be doing. And then we're enforcing the face covering requirement. So, a lot of progress there. And I think, like I said, keep your fingers crossed, it seems to be working pretty well so far. Nobody's, nobody's gotten sick. We've had a couple people who have had symptoms and gotten tested, and they've not been COVID positive. So, we're going to keep up the emphasis on all of that hygiene and hand washing and physical separation and face coverings so that we're all still hanging around, ready to do our work when we need to. On the financial side, since we last talked, the build consumption trend has continued for the first couple of weeks of June as it had for some previous months. Residential build consumption is up about 10% and commercial is down between 30 and 40%. So, that has not changed very much even with things opening up. The delinquencies on both the residential and the non-residential are also up. As you know, we're not disconnecting, but we're going to be doing some soft reminders to, to customers about that. On the wastewater side, collectively, our expenses are doing better than budget, but the billing is lower for most of the wastewater communities as well. Now, that, of course, isn't an impact to the district, but it's an impact to the municipalities who will be collecting those monies so that they can pay us our assessment. So, there, there's a trickle-down effect, but it doesn't hit us directly. Water production, of course, we're now in an abnormally dry situation officially. And to date, we're up slightly over 2019. Since the beginning of the year, we've produced 3.76 billion gallons compared to 3.87 last year. However, the 2016 to 18 average is 4.07. So, we're still quite a bit down from the historical average, but things are getting better. And the really good news are that our expenses on the water side through May are much better than budget. That is due to the delay in filling the positions. We haven't hired as much summer help. We've had less purchasing that we've needed to do because there was slower work during the shutdown. We've had, we've been managing overtime very carefully, and we've had no out-of-state travel. So, all those things are adding up together to have the desired effect on our budget. And a couple of other kind of really cool, interesting things I think you'll like. So, Portland Water District is exploring a partnership with a professor at St. Joseph's College to look for RNA fragments of COVID-19 in our wastewater. You know how some communities were able to use drug testing of wastewater to determine how many people in their service area were, were having drug problems or if there was a drug issue? Well, there's some cutting-edge research that suggests that you, if you have a sense of how much COVID-19 RNA is in your wastewater, it will give you a sense of what the prevalence is in your community. So, we'll collect some samples from East End and Westbrook for a while and see if we can learn anything that will help our public health professionals on that. June 13 to 17 was Clean Water Week. We conducted a week-long social media campaign, did a physically distance ribbon cutting at the Cape Elizabeth UV new UV installation, and sold 349 grain barrels. There's a video of the ribbon cutting on our PWD.org/videos if you'd like to see it. Bob Malley of Cape Elizabeth, who was soon ending his 40-year career with the town, I think it's 40 years, with the town, was there. And he said he actually was at the Cape Elizabeth plant when it was started up. So, what the heck, I let him cut the ribbon. He got a big kick out of it. So, and the last thing I have to report is it's not in this issue of the report because it was just happened. But on the 15th, the Conservation Fund announced an acquisition of 15,000 acres of tree, of land in Western Maine that was the Chadbourne Tree Farms. 3,000 of those acres are in the Sebago Lake watershed. And of course, our environmental folks are all over that. And you will be hearing much more about that in the future. So, that is my report.
This is Trustee Garrison. I have a question. You mentioned that the collections were down, but I didn't recall hearing the numbers for residential and commercial, how far off they were.
The residential is, the delinquencies on residential are up 3% and the non-residential is up 4%.
Okay, so that, that's very positive.
Yeah, it's not, it's not anywhere near as bad as one might fear, if that's what you mean.
Yeah, no, thank you very much. That was good. I was fearful that they were a lot longer.
No, thank David for all that data which he provided to me today.
Carrie, this is Trustee Willie. Are you, is there a monthly tally that you're making to to quantify how, how much over or short we are on the water side? I mean, sure, demand is, is up or down depending on the customer class. And collections fold into that. But is there a final, are, are you scoring this somehow? So that month to month, we know we're slipping or we're holding?
Well, the revenues and the consumption are all in the finance part of the General Manager's Report every month. The reason that I've been trying to give, give you these little updates is because this is June 22nd, but you're looking at last month's information there. So, that's why I asked David just before the meeting to sort of give me the past couple of weeks of updates. So, the, the year-to-date against budget and against actuals are, are all in that financial report, financial part of the report.
Okay. I okay, I can, I can call you separately about this. I, I guess. Yeah, okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. Does anyone else have any other questions? Okay, we can move on to new business.
The next item is a public hearing regarding an amendment to an existing bond and to authorize issuance of sewer bonds. So, Louise, if you want to convene the public hearing, I don't know if there's anyone here from the public, but you can ask. And if there isn't, go ahead and close the public hearing and we'll move on to the next item.
Okay. So, we will open the public meeting. And if there is no one here from the public, we will move forward to close that public meeting.
Okay, the next item is Resolution 20-009, authorizing an amendment to the previously authorized sewer bonds issued to finance the primary clarifier upgrade at the East End Treatment Plant in Portland.
Trustee Garrison.
Thank you. Resolved Resolution 19-011 is hereby amended to authorize the issuance of up to $980,000 in Portland sewer bonds reflecting an increase of $230,000 to finance the primary clarifier upgrade at the East End Treatment Plant in Portland. The full form of the resolution attached hereto is hereby approved and shall be attached to and incorporated as part of the minutes of this meeting.
Trustee Lent, I second that resolution.
Some background analysis, at the February 24, 2020 meeting, the board authorized an increase of $230,000 to the construction budget of the project upgrading the primary clarifier at the East End Treatment Plant in Portland. The board previously authorized $750,000 for this project. The 2020 budget had assumed a Portland bond amount of $750,000. The amendment increases the proposed bond amount by $230,000, which increases the annual assessment by an estimated $18,000. Corporate counsel has reviewed the proposed resolution as deformed. The committee recommended the motion be forwarded to the full board for its consideration. The full form of motion, the Portland $980,000 bond authorization is attached to this motion.
Trustee Lent asking a question.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Lent. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wondered, could you just give us a quick discussion on what the increase of $230,000 exists of?
I guess I'll defer that to Mr. Kane.
Well, actually, I'm going to defer to Mr. Provo, who answered the motion back. Yeah, we, just give a quick update. That was a amendment we had to the CIP a couple of months ago, actually February, I guess, back when we're in the, in the building anyways, where we found the concrete and I showed some pictures of the concrete deteriorating. And that, we found out that we needed to do a lot more than what, what, what we had planned. We had done basin one last year. So, we thought we were estimating the right amount, 750, but lo and behold, when we got in and emptied the tank, there was some deteriorated concrete. So, that's why we had to amend the, amend it $230,000.
Trustee Lent, thank you. I, I ask these questions when I even sometimes already know the answers, but I wanted it to become part of the public record for those that could be checking on this later. Thank you.
Everyone else all set? Okay, Trustee Garrison.
Okay, I will do the roll call.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right. Trustee Burns.
Yes.
Trustee Beck.
Yes.
Trustee Lovinsky. Trustee Lovinsky. Trustee Lent.
Yes.
Trustee Garrison. Trustee Douglas.
Yes. Yes.
Trustee Cody.
Yes.
Trustee Libby.
Yes.
Trustee Rich.
Yes.
Trustee Savisky.
Yes.
Trustee Willie.
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is Resolution 20-010. It's authorizing issuance of sewer bonds to finance installation of tide gates near India Street in Portland.
Okay, Trustee Garrison.
Resolve the issuance of up to $420,000 Portland sewer bonds is hereby authorized to finance installation of tide gates near Industry in Portland and other related infrastructure upgrades and improvement. The full form of the resolution is attached hereto and incorporated as part of the minutes of this meeting.
Trustee Lent, I second that resolution.
The proposed motion provides funding for projects included in Includes 2018, 2577 Industry NEPS Tide Gate Replacement for $400,000, 2017, 2641 Industry NEPS Tide Gate Replacement Design of $20,000. The bond is planned to be issued directly to the bond market. It indicates that the full year's debt service payment would be $30,000. The financial impact was incorporated into the Portland Wastewater Fund and assessment forecasts provided to the municipalities. Corporate council has reviewed the proposed motion as deformed. The committee recommended the motion to be forwarded to the full board for its consideration. Attached to the full form of motion. I have a question for Mr. Crowe. I just would like a little bit of detail on the tide gate replacement. Was that a physical structure or just a tide gate attachment that was added to the end of a pipeline?
It's an actual replacement of a couple of, I guess there were flap gates that were existing down on India Street in the northeast. So they're being replaced in kind for the most part. They're just 40 years old and they're leaking.
Thank you.
Trustee Lund asking a question?
Okay.
To Chris Crowe, is this pretty much the end of the tide gates that we've got to replace? I know we've done several of them over the years, but is this getting close to the end of them?
I'd like to defer that to Scott Furman, please. He has a better handle on that. But we do still have quite a bit of, I know we still have quite a bit of tidal water coming into the plant, so I'll let Scott answer that.
These two are two of the larger ones we have left to replace. We've done some smaller ones with a duck bill type arrangement. I believe we have a few of those left. We've had a program where we've tried to spread this cost over several years, a little at a time. So these are the last of the large tide gates that we're replacing. And I will point out that the city has a number of these and they will be replacing them as part of their CSO program. As Chris pointed out, right now, something like 5% of the flow to the East End Treatment Facility is seawater inflow. This project will go a long ways towards reducing that seawater input to the plant.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll call the roll. Trustee Burns?
Yes.
Trustee Beck?
Yes.
Trustee Levinsky?
Yes.
Trustee Lund?
Yes.
Trustee Garrison?
Yes.
President Douglas?
Yes.
Trustee Cody?
Yes.
Trustee Libby?
Yes.
Trustee Rich?
Yes.
Trustee Saviski?
Yes.
Trustee Willie?
Yes.
The next item is Order 20-021, authorizing the issuance of green bonds.
Trustee Garrison?
The 980,000 and 420,000 Portland sewer bonds authorized on June 22, 2020 will be designated as green bonds with the proceeds used for green purposes.
Trustee Lund, second the resolution.
The board has scheduled to authorize up to $980,000 and $420,000 Portland wastewater bonds at their meeting of June 22 meeting. That's obviously tonight's meeting and we have passed both of those authorizations. The bonds will provide funds to finance the upgrade to the primary clarifier at the East End Water Treatment Plant and the installation of tide gates near Industry and other related infrastructure upgrades and improvements. They are environmentally beneficial projects designed to ensure safe drinking water for the public and the state in accordance with state, federal, and local standards. Therefore, the bonds can be designated as green bonds. Green bonds versus ordinary bonds are on average about six basis points below yields paid by otherwise equivalent bonds. The district's financial advisor recommended the board pass a motion indicating that bond proceeds will be used for green purposes. Other than declaring the bonds as green in the bond's official statement, the only other obligation on the district would be to provide certain post-issuance reporting showing that actual use of the bond proceeds for its declared purpose. The bond is scheduled to be sold in July 2020. The district intends to issue 1.4 million bond on August 1st. The estimated annual interest savings in the first year of the green bond could be on the order of $8,400. Corporate council reviewed the proposed motion and approved it as deformed. The committee recommended the motion be forwarded to the full board for its consideration. Attachments include Section A, a support for estimated debt service savings, and A, Section Two draft language to be included in the bond's official statement. And I'll add to that motion, just a commentary that I think it's very wise that we're investing in selling green bonds. A lot of portfolios nowadays are looking for green investments, and I believe the premium for those green investments is going to continue going up, which is going to drive down the interest rates for more of these type of investments.
Thank you, Trustee Garrison. Do we have any questions? Donna?
I'll call the roll. Trustee Burns?
Yes.
Trustee Beck?
Yes.
Trustee Levinsky?
Yes.
Trustee Levinsky?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Lund?
Yes.
Trustee Garrison?
Yes.
President Douglas?
Yes.
Trustee Cody?
Yes.
Trustee Libby?
Yes.
Trustee Rich?
Yes.
Trustee Saviski?
Yes.
Trustee Willie?
Yes.
The next item is Resolution 20-011. It's authorizing an amendment to the defined benefit pension plan's funding policy.
Trustee Garrison?
Resolve the defined benefits pension funding policy approved September 23, 2013, and amended March 23, 2015, be further amended to allow an adjustment to the actuarially determined contribution due to the impact of declared national emergency.
Trustee Lund, second?
The district has two defined benefit plans, a non-bargaining unit plan and a bargaining unit plan. The actuary conducts a study using data of May 1st each year to calculate the recommended contribution to be made in the following year. The actuary follows the guidance incorporated in the board adopted defined benefit pension plan's funding policy. The preliminary report was recently prepared and indicated that the 2021 contribution would increase by $596,325 as described in the motion. The preliminary reason for the increase was a decline in asset values primarily due to the COVID-19 national emergency. The asset value as of May 1, 2020 was $24,577,700, a $1,451,697 decline from the prior year. Subsequent to the May 1, 2020, most of the decline had been recovered. The proposed policy amendment allows an adjustment to the ADC calculation due to market valuation anomaly due to declared national emergency. Without the policy amendment, the recorded ADC is 1.61716987 million, a $596,325 increase. The district policies to fully fund the ADC. The proposed amendment would decrease the ADC and reduce the impact to the 2021 budget. Corporate council reviewed proposed motion and approved it as deformed. The committee unanimously recommended the proposed change be made. Attached is the defined benefit pension plan's funding policy. 15 revision.
Ken, are you okay?
Oh, yeah. Just have to take two minutes.
Okay, could you mute?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
I'm glad that didn't happen while I was reading.
Does anybody have any questions for Seth? I'm seeing none. Donna?
Trustee Burns?
Yes.
Trustee Beck? Oops, I think we've lost Trustee Beck. I'll come back to him. Trustee Lund?
Yes.
Trustee Garrison?
Yes.
President Douglas?
Yes.
Trustee Beck?
Yes.
Trustee Cody?
Yes.
Trustee Libby?
Yes.
Trustee Rich?
Yes.
Trustee Saviski?
Yes.
Trustee Willie?
Yes.
Trustee Levinsky? Okay, he is absent for that vote. Order 20-022 is the next item, authorizing the general manager to execute a professional services contract with Woodard and Curran.
Trustee Beck?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. The following proposed language is presented with the trustee's approval and making the form of a motion. Order, the general manager is authorized to execute a professional services contract with Woodard and Curran in the amount of $49,600 for preliminary engineering services to the East End wastewater treatment facility, primary gallery, electrical upgrade, preliminary design, CIP 2020, 21 slash 3208. And if the general manager and the treasurer each acting similarly are authorized to take such steps as may be necessary to accomplish the intent of the vote. I would welcome the second.
Trustee Lund, I'll second it.
Thank you. The background analysis, the electrical gear in the primary gallery was installed during initial construction in the mid-1970s and is nearing the end of its service life. For the 2017 wastewater treatment facility electrical master plan, following upgrade of the median voltage distribution system and lead switch gear from underway, it was recommended to replace the low voltage equipment feeding the process areas coincident with upgrades in that area. The primary gallery serves several processes currently under consideration for upgrade, including gravity pecker number one, plant water pumping, and primary sludge handling systems. The assessment will evaluate the condition of the primary gallery, evaluate alternatives to most cost effectively replace the existing equipment, and provide a preliminary design as a proposed solution for consideration in future capital improvement plans. Staff reviewed and scored three proposals from qualified teams that provided proposed methods for achieving project goals. Based on the outcome of the review and ranking, Woodard and Curran received a best overall score, 109. Staff therefore recommends award to Woodard and Curran for amount of $49,600, which includes condition assessment, alternatives analysis, and preliminary design. As approved by Board Order 20-007 on February 24, 2020, the phased method for procuring engineering services will be used for this project. Meeting on the patient, this contract will be finalized and the outcome incorporated into future planning and procurement efforts. Project number is 2020, subprogram 21 slash project 3208. This will review and funding the project as included in the 2020 capital improvement plan and is programmed to finance through the new oil replacement fund. Corporation, corporate council has reviewed the proposed order as deformed. Staff recommends awarding preliminary design engineering services for upgrade to the East End Wastewater Treatment Facility Primary Gallery with Woodard and Curran. We recommended that the item be forwarded to the board by a vote of 3 to 0. Attached are supporting information including the table summarizing the results of the second election committees evaluating of each response. Thank you.
If there are no questions from anyone, I'll go ahead and take the roll call. Are there any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to the roll call. Trustee Burns?
Yes.
Trustee Beck?
Yes.
Trustee Levinsky?
Yes.
Trustee Lund?
Yes.
Trustee Garrison?
Yes.
President Douglas?
Yes.
Trustee Cody?
Yes.
Trustee Libby?
Yes.
Trustee Rich?
Yes.
Trustee Saviski?
Yes.
Trustee Willie?
Yes.
The last item is Order Number 20-023, authorizing the comprehensive method for the procurement of engineering services for the North Wyndham Wastewater Treatment Facility project.
Trustee Beck?
Thank you, Madam President. The following proposed language is presented for board trustee approval and I'm making the form of a motion. Order that the comprehensive method is authorized for the procurement of engineering services for the North Wyndham Wastewater Treatment Facility project pursuant to the district's purchasing policy and that the general manager and the treasurer each acting similarly are authorized to take such other steps as may be necessary to accomplish the intent of this vote.
Trustee Cody, second set.
Thank you, Trustee Cody. Background analysis, pursuant to the district's purchasing policy and the memorandum of understanding through date 26, 2020, Order 20-020, staff is seeking approval for the board of trustees to procure engineering services for the planning, design, and bidding of the North Wyndham Wastewater Treatment Facility. Comprehensive method for engineering will result in one engineering contract that would provide all the engineering services for the district, from design to startup to the upgrade. Contract amendments will be negotiated at predetermined milestones defined in your request or proposal, the RFP. Planning the installation of a new collection and groundwater receiving system will be a substantial effort, likely involving capital investment of tens of millions of dollars. The focus of this RFP will be to exhaustively seek the most cost-effective system configuration possible, taking into account for initial and long-term impacts. The engineering analysis performed under this contract will evaluate cost containment strategy to ensure that proposed wastewater solutions offer the town the best possible value. Due to the importance of the initial assessment in establishing long-term costs and pursuant to the terms of the MOU, the RFP will be structured with milestones to facilitate the collaborative preliminary design development process. The preliminary design efforts will include numerous field surveys, including geotechnical and hydrogeological investigations, treatment and groundwater receiving technology assessments, plant and collection system alternatives evaluation, and cost estimating. It's expected that preliminary design effort will be approximately $400,000 based on similar past projects. Once the method is approved, staff will issue a request for proposal. Once the method is approved, staff will issue a request for proposals. It is expected that a recommendation will be offered to the board late summer. This for reviewing funding, it's expected the project will be bond financed, the project cost impact is not included in the project projection including 2020 budget policy. Corporate counsel has reviewed and approved the form of motion. Staff recommends a comprehensive engineering method to utilize design and build this project. The operation committee recommends that the item be forwarded to the board by a vote of three to zero. Thank you.
Louise, you're, oh, there you go. You're here, sorry.
Yes, thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Okay, I'll call the roll. Trustee Burns?
Yes.
Trustee Beck?
Yes.
Trustee Lovinski?
Yes.
Trustee Lunt?
Yes.
Trustee Garrison?
President Douglas? Trustee Cody?
Yes.
Trustee Libby?
Yes.
Trustee Rich?
Yes.
Trustee Savisky?
Yes.
Trustee Willie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so that brings us to other business. I don't know that we have, we did not have any other business to add to the agenda tonight. So now I move to a second invitation for public comment. And I still don't have any public attending tonight, so we can move on to trustee comments.
This is Trustee Willie. I guess I have an inquiry about the, we're looking to the governor's direction on various aspects of participation, and there are rules or some guidelines put out for town meetings or in public meetings. And my thought is to always discuss things well before and then decide, later maybe even. But I'm curious what the trustees think about, at least exploring what can be done in our physical plant. We have 11 trustees, so it's a big board. But in terms of talking about it, at least in finding out what can be done, right now it's 50 people limit, but that's in a big room, too. I don't think we can put 50 people in Douglas Street, but, so I'm just checking in, asking, and maybe timely to at least ask Carrie and the staff to see what can be done and what can't be done.
If we could, Trustee Willie, if we could talk about this at the workshop, I think that would be, that would be very helpful. The building is not ready for large groups of people to be in it. The Nixon Room, even though it is physically set up in a way that theoretically would accommodate trustees and SMT, it is very, very uncomfortable being that close to a lot of other people in that room. So I think there's a way that we could look at maybe doing some blended meetings and that people who are comfortable with the technology could stay remote. We have, try to protect the high risk of those of us among us and let some other folks maybe come into the Nixon Room and, not to the Nixon Room, but to Douglas Street and be single people in single rooms at this point. So I'm going to try to set up something like that for the workshop because the coming workshop will be very much where you will, where we won't be able to provide a hard copy in advance and try a blended meeting there, and we could also discuss it at that, at that time if that's okay.
Well, and, you know, I guess I was curious what the trustees thought because quite frankly, I, as long as the pandemic is unfolding, I think it always should be an opt-in. I, you know, I'd even, I sent a email to Carrie about, I think we even should advocate that if the emergency order is lifted, that there still should be an option for trustees or people to opt-in if they decide not to. But, but again, you know, a lot of it is just whether the room is, the room may be too small anyway. I don't know. I just have no idea.
Well, technically, the room can, sorry, go ahead, Donna.
Yeah, if I could just clarify, so the governor's order, she has extended the civil state of emergency until July 11, which means that under the law, remote meetings may continue until August 11th because the law is set up that until 30 days after the expiration of the civil state of emergency, remote meetings may continue. So should she extend the state of emergency in July, then remote meetings can continue into the fall. The advice that was given for town meetings, a lot of the towns that have a town meeting form of government are really up against a difficult calendar because they needed to get their budgets prepared. Towns are on a fiscal year calendar, July 1st, so many of them needed to get their warrants and town meetings conducted so that they could enter the next fiscal year, and there's been some significant delays. So last week she issued some guidance on that, and some of that guidance includes having town meetings outdoors because many of these small towns don't have capacity to have a meeting that is safe with people socially distancing. So there's some, she, they've issued some pretty detailed guidance for town meetings, but again, that was because she recognized that towns were entering the new fiscal year with no budgets, so they kind of felt they needed to help guide them. But that, that doesn't apply so much, that the guidelines she has for the town meetings doesn't apply to us, so we are still operating legally anyway, under the remote meeting provisions until August 11th. And Trustee Willie is right, there is still a limit of 50 people in any space anyway, but that, this is all continuing to evolve and depends on how things are going with the pandemic from week to week, but that's the present status right now. So we can continue remote meetings till August 11th.
And I certainly would be interested to hear how different trustees feel, you know, feel about this. I'm, tend to be err on the side of extreme caution myself, feeling that it's important to lead by example for our employees as well, but I'm open to input.
Well, and just lastly, the part that may not work is that I know Joe doesn't sit six feet away from me. Now, I know to my left, nobody is within six feet of me seated, but, but again, the Nixon Room, it'd be interesting to know if it's even possible.
It is, it is. We've, the room is set up right now with a circle of tables, and if you allow one person per table, there are 11 people around a phone in the middle of the room, and there are chairs for the senior managers around the edge of the room. But it, I've been in there with four people and it, with six people every other table, and even that is very uncomfortable, being with so many people in that space. So I'm, I, it's physically set up, it technically meets all the requirements, but it's not ideal.
Okay, that's fine. And the outdoor meeting, you know, the lake is a place to do that, but it gets a little buggy, too, so I'll leave it there. And I'm interested to, if any trustees have some interest in it, but it doesn't sound like the Nixon Room can work.
Yeah, Jamie, I, I agree with you. I think that Carrie and I talked about it earlier today. We can get into it more at a workshop, and that way all the trustees can chime in and kind of share their thoughts and feelings.
Good job.
Trustee Lunt, I've never, Trustee Lunt, I've never been able to keep my mouth shut.
Well, we know that.
Thank you, thank you very much for the recognition. I'm, I'm one of those people who is of that classification of problematic because of my age, which I can't help, there's nothing I can do about that. However, my, my comment is, if it's, if it's possible to meet the regulations that are set out by the governor, and those, all of us, I believe, are still feeding our families and doing business if we're in business, and we make provisions to go into an area, and I'm not a person that's uncomfortable doing that, as long as I do it, I carry a mask with me all the time, I sanitize like crazy, my hands are so soft, I get blisters if I'm not careful. But I, I would like to see if it's possible for those that wish to, to be able to choose to come into the district and start a regular meeting where you can look at somebody and actually talk to them and see some body language. That's my opinion.
This is Trustee Cody. So, operating a restaurant, and now with the governor allowing us to do limited seating, we are basically sold out every night, and that's probably 100 to 150 people in the evening. That's our current limit. And 90 to 95% of our guests do not wear or request face masks of our servers, nor do they wear masks. So I think, I would just throw that out as, I'm, I'm comfortable returning back to, to face-to-face meetings and that, you know, maybe our guests are unique, but they certainly have not shown any hesitation in coming back out.
Well, if I may be, if I may be so bold, a very conservative person would say that you now have been exposed to 150 people, and you may be bringing that back into the Nixon Room to the rest of us.
I already believe I was exposed last year, so, in fact, I'm waiting to, I gave blood a few weeks, a month ago, and I'm hoping to be one of those plasma donors with the antibodies in it, so.
Well, Guy, if someone is sick at your restaurant, you can tell them it wasn't from the food.
Yes, thanks, Ken.
Okay, so I think this will be a hot topic for our workshop. Okay, so we didn't have any reason to go into executive session tonight, so I do believe we can adjourn our meeting. Thanks, everybody.
Job well done, Ms. President.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, good night.
Bye.